Can you hear us okay?
Except for Hans will some mute.
We got one, like, one more minute, then we'll get started.
Assume.
I'm I'm familiar about that. Issues are.
All right, it's six o'clock. Hold on one second, I'm gonna start the webinar.
Hey. I am gonna call the July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting in Lacey Planning Commission to order. We have three members absent right now, Gail, Elliot, and Edward, yes, Ed. Otherwise, everybody's here, Karen is remote. We do have some members of the public here observing us tonight. So I would ask Judas to read the land acknowledgement, please.
We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawksen Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today, who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as a traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state and city, to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda in front of us. If there are no amendments, I would welcome a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Judy and then Daphne, all those in favor?
Hi.
Awesome. And then looking at the June twenty-six meeting minutes, if there are no amendments to that, I would also enter.
Second.
Spencer, then Tanya. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Host, awesome. Okay, public comment. We do have some members of the public here are.
Um, yes, I suppose.
So if you're gonna make comment, just a reminder that the microphone is like up there in the ceiling. So you might wanna just kinda come close to the table. You're welcome to sit at the table, I think you'd like, and keep your comments to about three minutes.
So I'm Vanessa Versa. I've been doing business mostly out in northeast Lacey since nineteen ninety-three. I was the original broker for Meriding Campus when we opened up that project in nineteen ninety-three. So I've been doing business here a long time. I'm just not generally very visible to the City Planning Commission, unless I have a project that is, you know, of a purpose that we're in here working on. However, since I started working with the city, many people have changed on the staff and it's becoming noticeable to me as I come into the city and I don't really know some of the people that are here in news, so I thought I'd start coming back to the Planning Commission meetings to see where you guys are going with your direction with growth for the city. It's very important to me as a broker that sells a lot of land, I've sold a lot of land out in northeast Lacey, to know what your direction is, especially on your long-range planning. As I advise my clients, Mike is one of my clients. I sold him quite a bit of property and a lot of buildings have been developed on that property that support local business. So that's why I'm here. And then Mike is here because we've got a property we've assembled and we need to look at some land uses on it and we wanted to get a flavor for where the city's going and how you feel about this property. And Mike has, and we have a very definite idea of what to do with this property. And I was out showing one of the buildings to a gentleman and I think he's a council member. And he said, you know, if you wanna do this work, you need to come in and start talking to the Planning Commission immediately. So I grabbed Mike and I said, get out of your Seattle office and come on down here at six o'clock at night on Wednesday, Wednesday. Drive through all that traffic and let's come down and let's meet the people who are the future planners of the city. So that's why we're here. And then, do we wanna show them the property?
Sure. So I, give me one second to share screen, so folks at home. So the property is, so the property that they're representing and that they're interested in looking at some zoning changes around is the Hill Betty Business Park. So it was owned by Evelyn Betty once upon a time and has since been sold. Evelyn has long since passed away. So it's west of Marvin Road, north of Britton Parkway. So Britton Parkway is this kind of S-shaped lot, or S-shaped road here. So this property has a combination of some smaller outbuildings on it currently. A lot of them are older, especially along the Marvin roadside. And then some newer buildings that are kind of in the middle of the site. If you've ever been to like Tops, the counter place, that's where that's at. And they also have some property kind of in the southwest corner over here. So this property is zoned light industrial commercial. And in the southwest corner here, this is Hoxbury Business District Business Commercial, I think. Is that part of it?
It is, and it's the Hoxbury Business District Commercial, which is a little bit of a difficult zoning for what Mike and his family wanna do with the property long term. That property, so the corner piece, if you go out to the corner, that little kind of pie-shaped piece right there, that was part of the original zoning of the Hill Betty Business Park. That's Hoxbury Business District Business Commercial, I believe.
Yeah.
And then Mike acquired twenty acres of the forty acres that Econet owned, right there, about a year and a half ago. And that property originally was light industrial commercial and Econet rezoned it for their own special purpose. They were gonna do a wellness clinic there, kind of a retreat. And so they rezoned it to that. And what we've looked at is taking that back to the light industrial commercial to complete the business park work that we wanna continue on that property. And we've done a lot of looking at that, the zoning and just seeing what would work out there. And so I don't know if you wanna speak to that or if you just want me to.
Sure. No, you're doing, you're doing great.
A quick question, Ryan.
Yeah.
This is Marv, of Marvin, not Mark.
Marvin, correct. This is, this is not on the agenda. This is just part of public comment.
Yeah, it's just like, I was like, Marvin, Marvin, I know they sound the same, but I was like, not following. Okay, thank you.
Right, so that property, when we purchased the north twenty acres and brought it into the Hill Betty Business Park, we now have a eighty-seven acre perfect rectangle, street to street, Gateway Boulevard to Marvin Road. And the intention of this property by Evelyn Betty many years ago was to develop a business park, which is what she developed when she built all the metal buildings out there. And the intention of it is to continue this as a business park. What we found when we went through and we were looking at this zoning, we realized that almost ninety percent of the current tenants that we have would not fit in that zoning, as it says today, because it's really a retail zoning, not a business park zoning. Light industrial is a business park zoning which also allows retail. So if you go out there to the tenants that we have today, somebody like Archery World is out there, you know, they, they won't fit in your light industrial zone, but they'll fit in the light industrial commercial zone because light industrial commercial zone has that retail element. The long-term vision for this property is to develop along Marvin Road, more of what we call service industrial, which is people, small businesses that have an element of will-call and clientele coming into a showroom, but they also need dock and grade loading, those kinds of buildings, many that you see already that Mike owns as you drive into Meriding Campus. So if you drive in along Willamette Drive, you'll see some smaller buildings, sixty, seventy thousand square feet. They've got multiple tenants in it. That is the flavor of what we see out here along Marvin Road. So one of the things that we've been working on is, when do we ask the city? Should we ask for a rezon? When do we do that? How do we discuss the zoning with them? That we've now acquired this beautiful piece of property that we can design a lovely business park on, but we've got these two pieces that don't really fit, don't really fit the type of clients we wanna bring out, the businesses we wanna bring out. We look at that hard corner of Britain, Hickory Stick and Marvin Road, which is right on the corner, and that is like, you know, that's a real hard retail zoning. So what do you put there? You put a drive-through there, you put a gas station there, you know. That's not really what we think you want there. It's really kind of far up north on Marvin Road. And so anyway, we were just coming down to kind of see what's going on with you guys.
Okay, so I think this will probably be a future agenda item for us. Thank you for the introduction. You're gonna work with Ryan and his crew to prepare something that eventually comes to the Planning Commission. We do have a rezoning consideration in our, on our agenda tonight, so you're certainly welcome to watch that process so you know what the thought processes are of the commission members. But I thank you for your comments. I, I think you're, you're, you're very relevant. Your comments are very, very relevant in knowing what I know about that area. But yeah, we look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. And just so you know, it's always been our attitude for every property owner that I've worked with out in northeast Lacey that understanding that the city of Lacey is a partner in whatever development happens.
Right.
And we've been very, very successful in working through with the city the challenges that they face and the goals that they wanted to achieve over the past thirty years. And I think this whole area out here has turned out quite beautiful as a result of many of the property owners doing that and the city being very good to work with.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. And I know what, what you're describing sort of carries on the legacy of Evelyn Betty because she had a very, very strong sense of the economic health of the city. And, and but making the development blend in with what is desired for the city to look like. So.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, thank you. That's why we're here.
As a poll, I'll bring your glasses.
Thank you very much.
Planning Commission has looked at this property previously, so back in twenty twenty-one, there was, the council adopted a zoning text amendment that went through the Planning Commission. Daphne, I think you might have been here at the time, to increase the building square footages that were allowed in light industrial commercial from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand square feet specifically for this site. So we've looked at this site before and done some zoning adjustments on the zoning text level. We haven't done any zoning changes from kind of looking at changing the actual zoning. So that, so previous effort would allow for a larger building. The thing back in twenty twenty-one was they allowed a larger building, but it had to retain some of the smaller tenants in there because even though those are in some older buildings, some smaller tenants, they are crucial for our economy because they're the people that are coming kind of right out of their garage and need that next space to land, right? And so if they're displaced by a big five hundred thousand square foot warehouse, that's a concern because we're losing that kind of like, you know, I wanna say maker space, but you know, that, that kind of.
Transition.
Yeah, transition from people right out of their garage into something bigger. So we, we have looked at that before. The other thing I wanted to mention was that as part of our comprehensive plan update that, you know, we're going through a big process, you'll be briefed on some of the public outreach on tonight, is that we will be doing kind of an open call for applications for essentially community suggestions for any rezon or for any zoning changes. And so anybody, for basically any reason, can suggest any kind of zoning changes along the way. And certainly we'll, we'll kind of notify these folks as well as the rest of the community that that's an open avenue to be able to rezon properties with, with our, or under the auspices of our comprehensive plan update. Not all applications will be processed. These will be only ones that will kind of get vetted and through our process and taken up, given kind of some guidance by our council as far as those that they wanna make a priority. Because I don't think we'll be able to do all of them. We've got a significant number of inquiries at this point. So probably those that will rise to the top are those that create economic development opportunities, which this could be a good candidate for. So, so stay tuned on that for, I think we'll open those up here in the next two to three months. We'll certainly notify you all when that becomes available so that if you do decide that wanna go that avenue, that you can do that. Good news is that it's not like a formal process. It's something that the city staff would leave. There's not gonna be any application fees or anything like that. So. But the, you know, the trade-off is if you don't get in that pool, then you're kind of, you'd have to wait till the next round of comprehensive plan updates, which would be in twenty twenty-six. So any questions on that at this point?
No, I think actually what, what she described here, Vanessa, is, is industrial flex buildings probably would cover, you know, what Ryan is saying about getting the guy that's just coming out of, or woman that's just coming out of their garage. And I just wanna start a winery, right? Or I just wanna start an archery studio. So, yeah, I'm excited to see what you got coming.
Do you have an example of, of what your plan would be, sort of, community? When, when you talk about industrial.
With the plans, yeah, I'm, I'm a side of that, right? And we built our first building, that's us all this land, for RT London at eighty-six oh five Commerce Place. And they've been with us now twenty-some years. So that would be an example where they started out with thirty thousand square feet. They came out of an incubator, not an incubator, but they came out of a mid-level space, Tumwater. We built them a concrete tilt-up building, which they got better insurance on and had a better corporate image and offered them flexibility in their growth. That was eighty thousand feet. And today, twenty years later, they've absorbed seventy thousand feet. They're, they're doing good and they employ about fifty people. So that would be, that would be a really good example. We have a number of those people who have been with us several years in the park who are looking now to grow as the economy starts to move forward. And almost everybody in our tenant family has growth plans or would like to look at a new facility, would like to know the costs. And the, the older Hill Betty buildings, many of them are over forty years old, or have they reached a functional obsolescence. So what we would like to do is put together a showcase piece, both for the city and for the community, where they have places to grow their businesses and we can attract also new businesses from the outside as well. We think this is just an incredible location to do that continually here. And as Vanessa said, we have a public-private partnership here together. So, you know, in, in essence, we all have a stake, we're all stakeholders in this project. We would, we would like to have it exclusive to business parks as opposed to having a mixed use or retail or gas stations or something like that. That's where we've done our, that's where we've done our best. That's where our tenants want, and that's the industrial fabric of the community.
And the light industrial commercial zone is a very unique zone and a very valuable zone because it allows us to bring in people like Archery World, which is sort of a recreational use. It would allow us to put in any kind of sort of quasi-retail use as well as your traditional industrial uses in light manufacturing. It allows for all of that. And it's, it's the only large area out in northeast Lacey that has that zoning. And so that frontage along Marvin Road, what we found is that people that wanna have that visibility and drive by and client destination, they want that Marvin Road frontage. So some of the vision is to have those smaller businesses along Marvin Road in Class A buildings and then have your more, you know, your more manufacturing industrial behind that. But have the frontage just really beautiful, looking much like when you drive in through Willamette Drive and those class buildings in there.
And the job generation of businesses moving in there, do you have any idea what that would be?
Well, we planned, yeah, about a million two square feet, you know, it could be nine hundred two, million two. What we're doing right now with forty-four tenants in between RSS and Hill Betty have about five hundred jobs, five hundred employees there. So we think we can easily double that. But the target, the, the target is to bring in some people who've been really looking to get in the west that wanna do assembly on, on their cars, brought in from foreign spots. They need extra laydown space, but they bring in really high-paying technicians to put those cars together. That's, that's only one example. Another quick example to your question was, we have Penske. They started out with this with nine thousand square feet, two acre. They're just, you know, they're just growing like crazy. They love the location. They like area, they like Lacey. And now they're in eighteen thousand and they have four acres. And they're, right now, they're asking me, when, when can we anticipate getting a site with fifty thousand square feet so we can bring in some of these satellite shops that we have and consolidate them, be more efficient on ten acres? So, all right, okay, well, I'll get the ball rolling and go over and see the City Planning Commission tonight.
And all of those jobs are not entry-level jobs. Those are skilled jobs. Those are the jobs that are really valuable to what you wanna see as far as family wage jobs that come out here. You know, some of the industrial jobs you can't control. Some of them are entry-level jobs, but entry-level jobs today are even now paying pretty good wages. But we're seeing even the warehouse, the larger warehouse distribution centers, like the Fastenal Center that we sold twenty acres to, half of that is automated. So they've got people in there running that automation. It's a different kind of distribution job. You look at things like the Targets and the Home Depots and they've got pretty good employment, I think better than what it used to be because a lot of them recall are working as last-mile centers for their own distribution as well as just their warehousing. So it's changing, landscape's changing a little bit, warehousing. A lot of the people that we have, especially in the existing Hill Betty, a lot of those people want to stay there. They're waiting for new buildings to come up so they can relocate. A lot of those people are different kinds of jobs coming in. They're smaller businesses, maybe one, two, three employees, but they've got clients coming. So that's what they've got. So those people have been there a long time.
And your expectations as far as vacancy on these buildings, would they be? One of the fears that the Planning Commission has, or I do, is creating these huge warehouses where no tenants for these warehouses. We don't know what happens.
I, I would guess that that question is premature at this point.
I think that is a bit later.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we've gone a little over topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Possibility that, but you do have your prospective tenants and the ones that you described were, those are possibilities.
We've got forty-four of them. So we draw from that tenant base to probably build half of the park. With larger spaces or more modernized spaces. So that, that's where we'll draw first. Then with the discretionary land after that, we'll go to the outside.
And you just basically built a suit for each one of those tenants.
Basically, we might, for instance, we might put sixty thousand, we're gonna do this committee, we have thirty, thirty yet remaining.
So this will be a future agenda with more detail.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Is that three minutes?
Okay, any commission member reports tonight? Hey, department?
Yeah, I'll, I got a couple things that I'll mention. Number one, I, Daphne and I were talking about at the beginning, I'll just mention it. It's not official yet, but it looks like at this point that Daphne will be the Planning Commission's representative to the Parks Funding Board. So the, I mentioned maybe a meeting or two ago that there was, the council was establishing a board recommending some funding opportunities or funding options for our parks and wanted advisory board members. And, and Daphne, at this point, has been recommended to the council. So I, I would imagine that would go, go through just fine. So looking forward to Daphne's reports coming back as far as what, what's been recommended from that, that board. On the staffing side of things, so, you know, a while back, Grant retired, which I talked about. So we, we did a reorganization within our, our meaning Economic Development Department. So obviously we have, you know, Vanessa overseeing everything. We've got a couple of new employees. I just wanted to point out, number one is a new building official, Terry McDaniel. Has started here recently. So Terry is a seven or eight-year employee, has come up through Lacey and is now in the building official position. So oversees the, the building section, which is all of our building safety, fire safety, code compliance, that kind of part of the division of our department. Sarah Schelling, who many of you may know, Sarah's been a current planner for a long time here at Lacey. Been here almost as long as I have. She got announced as the new current planning manager. So she, she, her title is actually current planning and economic development manager. So she will oversee all of current planning as well as our economic development coordinator. Her first day officially in that position is August first. And then, so that leaves kind of the division that I oversee, which is kind of formerly known as long-range planning, has been now kind of renamed towards community planning. So just to add some distinction with my duties versus what Sarah does in current planning and economic development, the long-range division now is, is, is community planning. So underneath Vanessa, we have those three different divisions. And like I mentioned, two out of the three are, are brand-new employees. So looking forward to working with those folks in those, those capacities. So the, the good, the good news is we got those positions filled. The bad news is that they were filled by existing employees, so we have more positions. So we'll be putting out for a commercial plans examiner or building plans examiner and Sarah's position as a special projects planner coming soon. So the building plans examiner is open right now. So a lot of changes recently in our department, actually a lot of changes over the last four years in our department that continue to happen. But at this point, we're looking forward to being relatively stable here in the near future. So the other thing I wanted to mention just quickly is to go through the, the schedule. So you might have noticed, we talked about it at a previous meeting, that we're gonna only meet once in August. So the August fourteenth meeting is canceled at this point. Hans will be going through some information related to some upcoming outreach events that you're, you're welcome to attend. In fact, you're encouraged to attend if you're available. So we'd like to see you there. So there will be some engagement and opportunities if you're willing or wanting, wanting to attend. So our next meeting with the Planning Commission is August twenty-eighth. And I also wanted to mention that this year, the bus tour with all of our staff changes and demands, are the bus tours canceled for this year. So we won't be going on the City Council Planning Commission Bus Tour in twenty twenty. So that, that's all I have.
Well, congratulations to Sarah. I always, I've worked with her when I was in the assessor's office, worked with her at the, when I was on City Council and well-deserved promotion. Okay, thank you, Ryan. We have no public hearing tonight. We do have an item of new business, which is considering a rezon in the materials or in your agenda packet. So who's taking the lead on that one?
That's gonna be me as well. So. Uh, let me find. Here, I can close down this map. Bring up the presentation.
Provide some like landmarks I know, because I didn't see an address anywhere on this, Ryan, and I was trying to figure out like.
So this is the car dealership that is across the street from, I think it's Brian's Automotive?
I don't know that, but I can show you where Winko is.
I was like, I'm trying to figure it out and I was like, and I can't tell a building from the top. So I need a street view for that.
Let's, let me go through.
So right next door is the strip mall. That, that kind of L-shaped strip mall. That's where there's a hobby store, there's a couple of restaurants in there.
I go on Martin a lot. I, if you give me landmarks, I can figure it out. So, thank you.
So just kind of a little bit of an overview. So these slides weren't put together by me. This was Thurston County staff. So they've helped. So just by way of background, this is an application for a rezon that basically came up at the very end of the joint planning process. So somebody came forward, I think maybe at the public hearing that was held and said, hey, I've got this piece of property. It's on Martin Way. It's split-zoned and we want to do something about that because as, as it is, it's one piece of property that has two different zoning designations and we want to rectify that situation. And county staff at that point said, well, it's a little too late in the process to include this in the comprehensive plan update around the joint plan. So submit an application and we will consider it for our annual docket in twenty twenty-four. Well, fast forward, and here we are in twenty twenty-four. That was added to the docket and now it's in front of us as an out-of, what we're calling kind of an out-of-cycle request. So typically, these requests happen when the joint plan is updated. In my career, this is the first one that's happened outside of the joint plan update. So the, the process is a little unique in that it, the process for our planning commission, so because we do joint planning, we do the long-range planning for our urban growth area. The, what we do is we review the application and actually make a recommendation to the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission, they will take our recommendation, they will conduct the public hearing. And then they will make a recommendation of their own to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners decide decide whether or not to approve the rezone or not. So that is reflected in this slide here. So we are here at the city review. So we are reviewing the proposal with the planning commission and the purpose of today's briefing is really, I'll say, kind of the first step in the process. So this is a preliminary briefing, just to let you know that this is coming your way. Uh to basically ask questions that that I can then relay to Thurston County staff. If you have concerns about kind of what's been proposed. This is the time to be able to do that so that we can do some staff analysis around this and come up with actually a staff recommendation. That will be presented at a future meeting, most likely that that meeting in August. Any questions on that part of things?
I thought it was a car dealership. It's not. This is where it used to be. Yeah, trailer boss.
Yeah, it's a trailer dealership. Yeah. So uh so like I said, the next step is that this would go to the county planning commission, holding a public hearing, doing the environmental review and that kind of stuff. And then eventually by the end of this year, we'd go to the Thurston County Board of Commissioners for um for an update to the the zoning. Um this stuff at the top really isn't important, is not important for for you to just understand that this was put on the county's docket. This is not our docket. Um number seven of ten, which don't mean anything to us. But um what does is the second bullet around uh. Rezoning this eight point one seven acre parcel. It's located along Martin Way, as we've kind of discussed already. And is split zoned with the northern portion being mixed use high density corridor, which is basically the the zoning that's consistent along the Martin Way corridor. The southern part, and I've got a slide that shows this, the southern part is low density residential. So this is a proximity map. So as you as you've stated, this is a trailer lot dealership, something to that effect. Winko is the big white roof here. So this is on the south side of Martin Way, east of Winko. Uh this is the flooring, great floors. So that's on the north side. So uh Sonic would be right here on this side. This is uh, let's see, Tango Well Shopping Center is actually a little bit farther down. This is um. An older strip mall that that is adjacent to it there. I think there's another slide, yeah, here that shows. The site. So this is the full site. It's this kind of um fat L shape. So the the um property itself was uh fully treed on the southern side, on the southern portion. So this is actually part of the reason to go through this is that it's been a um a enforcement action. So they actually moved these, they took down all the trees on the southern part, moved on all the trailers without any kind of land use approval. And then all also, by the way, it's zone low density residential.
Yeah, that was, there's several of my questions.
Yeah. So some details about the site, uh it's used for trailer storage. There are no permanent structures on the site. Uh as we mentioned, the zoning, it's split zoned. There's no water or sewer service currently to the site. So um Martin Way has really good utilities. If it was ever developed to its full potential, it could connect to city water and city sewer. Um and then there, like I mentioned, there is the vehicle for or the the violation for vehicle storage on the southern part of the property.
Is this the same owner? I'm sorry.
That, so it sounded like there's more than a violation for vehicle storage. There's also a violation for cutting the trees, I'm presuming.
Correct.
So those are not minor violations.
They are not. And my understanding, I talked to the county staff last week, they said that the trailers have been moved off of the southern portion.
They're still gone now.
Trees are still gone. But the the enforcement action is not Lacey's to take. So this is, keep in mind that this is in Thurston County's jurisdiction. And so any land use violations, those are required to be go through Thurston County and not Lacey. That's not something that we have control over. So you know, there's any kind of permits, land use approvals, violations, enforcement actions, those kinds of things are not. Those don't come through our office. They all come through Thurston County.
Do you know what the fines or uh would be? And I'm assuming. They're been assessed and just either satisfied or not satisfied then at this point, whether they enforce having we done so.
So I think the good question, um I don't know the status of any fines or those kinds of things. But what I can do certainly is is talk more with Thurston County staff and get a little bit more details around the status of the violation if you're.
See some more detail on that. That's a huge piece for me.
Yeah, so sounds like somebody created a violation on their own volition. And now they're coming to government to say, hey. If you do this, it's not a violation anymore.
That was my question. It's the same owner?
Same owner. It's one piece of property. So it's a contiguous owner.
No, the trader boss, the owner of this property as well?
I don't know who the owner is off off.
But and outcry from the residential as a man?
I don't know. Uh it's not, not complaints that we would take at our 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 front counter. So.
Yeah.
Um but I'll certainly look into the sta- the status of the violation. I think I think there's concerns about the the violation itself. But then also like the mix, the purpose of the mixed use high density corridor, we'll go into this in a little bit, is you know, to be pedestrian oriented. To be, you know, it's it's a corridor zoning district that allows for a mix of uses. Outdoor storage is prohibited. Um and so you know, the questions are about whether this was permitted, a permitted use of the trailer lot in the first place. I mean, I don't have any history. I don't know. Maybe it goes back a number of years, you know, and has an old approval. Um but there it. Questions come up in my mind as far as the legitimacy of the the use to begin with, especially if there's no structures on the site. There's no office or restaurants or.
Yeah, there used to be that that building to house RV parts.
Okay.
Truck parts.
Step up.
I think there used to be a couple of houses on the back half too.
Around the trees.
When the trees were there.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, and I and I, sorry if this interrupts your presentation, Ryan, but um. Critical to me is, you know, we've got the Martin Way corridor. We've got some, you know, we're we're considering putting significant effort into the the study. The implementation and um. I guess, you know, this initial view does not provide comfort that this is in in line with our plans for the Martin Way corridor. Um you know, obviously, this zoning may make it more amenable to that, but. I'm not comfortable if they violated significant, I don't know, it.
Yeah, so.
Creates great concerns to me that.
Yeah. I'd like this rezoned because I've got a redevelopment project in mind, or is this, I'd like it rezoned so I can put my trailers back on there?
That's a good question. Um and something we can find out more about as well. So.
Yeah. So forgive me, this isn't anything parallel to what you.
Also, it looks like they built up significant sand or some sort of matter on those two whiteout spots. I've zoomed in on the map and it looks like there's just significant amounts of gravel or something piled up there uh as well. So.
So you know, I so so far I've heard concerns about the violation. I've heard concerns that the use itself may not fit the vision of. You know, the corridor zoning that that's there and the the corridor plans that are in place. And I also hear about, you know, the. What's the long term plans? I- if this is rezoned, what are the long term plans? Is it to move the trailers back on? Or is it to actually do, you know, a development that contributes to the corridor? And I think that would be, you know.
We would also have concern if we said no and you have to get cleared out, what's an empty lot look like along Martin Way? That's a, that's a disincentive to bring in new business.
Yeah, keep in mind that um city's in a recommendation role. So even if we say no, the. Thurston County Planning Commission, that's just a recommendation to them. Thurston County holds the the decision making authority about any kind of rezoning. Any any permits that are issued on the site, those kinds of things. So just keep in mind that anything that the planning commission does here is is a recommendation to Thurston County. So you know, we we're not in a decision making role here at the city of Lacey. This just so happens to be in our urban growth area.
It's still recommendation along Lacey Boulevard. Um you know, we already have a empty. Several empty lots through there. It's not really attractive. It's one of the least attractive portion of Martin Way. You know, so.
I I appreciate the reminder of our role in this ultimately. That doesn't deter me from wanting to go on the record with what this. Planning commission sees and and you know, what we're trying to enforce and recognize in our role here. So I I really want to go on the record with our reaction to this.
Yeah, I I also have some big concerns because it looks like this parcel of butts to entirely residential.
It does.
Right. And so um it also extends really far back off of Martin Way and it feels like. I'm not sure the specifics of that, but it it doesn't feel like that entire parcel would meet the expectations and our goals for developing this area. And that that lower half would be better transformed into more residential areas.
Right. So you're you're talking about consistency with the surrounding area. So let's look at the the aerial photograph. So um keep in mind that, you know, this area to the west, south, east, all is residential, right? So so let's just kind of draw an invisible line right across.
Exactly where it's already zoned that way.
You just took the word.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so that that invisible line, which doesn't follow a property line, is is right here. And so you know, if we're concerned about compatibility, then this is an appropriate zoning. For you know, what what's around it. So it in looking at the uses that could be allowed here. This could be, you know, anything from, you know, any kind of commercial uses. It could be multifamily residential up to twenty units per acre. It could be a lot of, it could be mixed up, mix of those uses. So um it it brings up neighborhood compatibility issues that may need to be addressed.
Well, it's, and it's not really prime for any kind of, I guess, retail or or. Traffic coming off of Martin coming in there.
Has poor visibility. So it's very deep. It's hard to see in. Yeah.
Can I ask some kind of separate Martin Way corridor questions that kind of overlap? So as I envisioned what we were gonna talk about with this and looked at Martin Way, um and I'm thinking of like just. The AMPM that just got put in there and I and like they did an amazing job, you know, with the frontage on it and everything. I know that's counties, right?
No, that's uh Martin Way and Marvin Road.
It's like, it's like Lacey, awesome. It looks great. You know, the the curbing is nice, the planting is nice, what you could see from the street and everything. And then then as you gander away, uh you see, you know, the the curbing, the parking areas in horrific shape. Nobody's maintaining them. Is that the owner's responsibility going all the way out to the road? Is that city county responsibility? But as we envision um the Martin Way corridor and, you know, it's way beyond this, but like, what are we doing? Like, there are some low cost, uh don't require a lot of work of getting that corridor to look a lot. A lot nicer. And one would be just like, could you just mow it? Um could you weed it? Could you, you said AMPM looks really nice. You see nice plants. You see bark, you see, you know, a nice frontage. And I'm not saying everybody needs to build like little gating, gating kind of um. Uh things, but you just realize how bad it gets and how the current tenants aren't either maintaining it or if it's county or city. And um I'm just wondering why we can't maybe start a little smaller on some of that stuff. And let's make it look a little nicer and a little more inviting for business, a little more inviting for uh people to live there. Uh now and despite all the other stuff.
Well, and and speaking of the bus tour, which I mentioned earlier, you know, we've done the bus tour before and and said, hey, look out the windows. Here, you're in the city of Lacey, you're in Lacey city limits now. You know, let's transition into the Thurston County portion of the Martin Way corridor and it's completely different. It's the landscaping is not maintained. The temporary signage is out of control. There's buildings, there's, you know, all kinds of, you know, different uses. And and um in all s- states of various states of repair, right? Um and and so what it does is, so this is, I think, part of why the the council has been fairly um. Strong in wanting the city to look at annexing that that portion is because then we can control our own destiny, right? So then we can enforce our own rules and regulations about landscape maintenance, about signage, about those kinds of things. We can control the aesthetic part of it that Thurston County has not paid much attention to. So that, I think, is a reason for annexing that area is that we can bring it into Lacey and have it brought under our control. Because right now, as with this application, we are only in a mode to be able to recommend to Thurston County that something be done. Um and we don't control the permits that are issued in that stretch. We don't control the land use approvals. We don't control the code enforcement issues that are along there. Those are all the responsibilities of Thurston County. And the different standards between the two different areas show up loud and clear. And it's it's it shouldn't be that way. In the purpose for having joint planning in the first place is that you have consistency. You should not be able to tell when you're in our urban growth area or you're not. Um but Thurston County has not applied the same standard of development that we have in Lacey and it shows.
And that's what concerns.
Strong advocate for us annexing that because so many of those properties are ready for redevelopment. And if we ever hope to connect the older part of Lacey to Hawks Prairie and make everybody feel like they're consistently in Lacey. We gotta get control of that.
Uh and so that's what concerns me about this is we've already got corridor issues, continuity. And and this is just one chance to perpetuate the problems? Or to maybe halt it and make it better. I just want to throw in one more question that is completely not related, but when's the crane gonna be gone?
Um soon, yes.
Talked about the crane. Oh my gosh, it's insane how much money is being lost for whoever owns that crane. Um it's just, you know, those things are expensive.
So so our building department's on it. They're already communicating with the property owner and the crane's gonna be leaving very soon. There's some uh. Patching that they need to do to the street and buttoning up of that site to make sure that we get it stabilized before the winter time and the crane's gonna be leaving as well.
Crane work is done?
No, they essentially, my understanding is they ran out of money. Their funding fell through. And so at this point, they're looking for a new owner. Um and so they're gonna be buttoning up the site and then that would include the the train or train, crane being removed as well.
It just looks like it's a a danger. Somebody, car, somebody drunk drives into that thing and poples. I don't know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scary, okay.
So it's a good idea, a good example of something that the city can control, right? So that's in the city limits. That's where we should have permit. And now we're working with, you know, the people that have their grant. And they've lost their funding, but we're telling them, hey, we're gonna enforce our regulations and get you to move your crane out of out of there. Button up the site and then if you do happen to sell it to somebody, they can come back and open it up back up and start over, you know, start that process again. Um we have the oversight and the ability to do that, right? But if it was um a mile down the road in the gap of Martin Way, that's not in our jurisdiction. We would have no say in the matter.
So I'm gonna look for a motion here for a recommendation to.
I'm not done with the presentation and then I'll. And and then I don't need a recommendation. This is just a preliminary briefing and what I'm gonna do with this information is take it back to Thurston County staff and say, hey, I had a. Communication with our, you know, it was at this at the planning commission and these were their concerns. And then those things can be relayed back. Uh we can have a staff report that addresses some of the concerns and and um it it may be able, it may be that the recommendation is to deny and that's okay. Um but at least we have as much information as we can to make an informed decision. So.
Ryan, can I say one thing?
Yes.
Um I've driven past this. If you take um where Starbucks is on um. You go past the Arco and take third and go around, I drove past there and I saw all those trees were gone. And my daughter asked me, what are you guys doing over there? I'm like, I don't know. But it butts right up to a set of duplexes. Um and so my opinion is also that it should be residential. If they're gonna build anything there, especially now that all those trees are gone. It it needs to be residential.
Yeah, I would like to bring this to everyone's attention. I was reading about the specifics of it and the setback on the sides is ten feet minimum. And rear would be fifteen if it was set to the mixed use. So that would give almost no buffer whatsoever to those residential areas. And I think that would cause a lot of issues with residents.
So that's a.
I think, I mean, my feeling is, you know, one of the the big concerns that we have as a jurisdiction. It is lack of housing. And.
Especially for the older.
Right. And so removing this. From the high potential for housing, I think is a mistake.
Yeah, so that's a great segue. So let's look at, so right now there, we've got two split zones. The southern portion is low density, which is up to six units per acre. So that could be total of forty nine housing units here, right? So that that's something to keep in mind. It allows for some other different types of. You know, residential, like cottages, townhomes, those kinds of things. But it doesn't allow for any kind of commercial. The the proposed zoning district would allow for a density between twelve and twenty units per acre. So that would get up to a hundred and sixty two dwelling units. So in theory, this would be a a zone that would provide more housing units. Granted, it would be of a different type, right? So you're talking probably multi. So you're talking probably multifamily, probably rental and not within ownership opportunities. Um, and then commercially, so I talked about mixed use and then commercial uses. Uh, so a variety of commercial uses, including retail, financial, general services. So um, it could be a, you know. Granted, it doesn't have a lot of visibility for Martin Way, but it could be a, you know, an office complex or something like that as well.
So I, I mean, if. If the property owner was coming in and saying, hey, I've got this great idea for this property and it's going to include multifamily. Or if they came in and they said, okay, I've got a buyer. That is willing to buy this property if this zoning changes because they have an idea. That's far different than. I want you to get me out of my violations.
That is very different.
My, my thought was, if we had something like the reserve, you know, on Carpenter and Lacey and Pacific Boulevard there. That's ideal because they're directly across from the grocery stores, which they need. It's on the bus line. It has the infrastructure needed for that. Um, we're short, we do have a shortage of elderly housing. You know, we have the over fifty-five communities, which. Doesn't really fit there. The homesets but budding are nineteen-sixties. You know, very depressive beginner homes. Um, you know, you start sticking. Single-family residences along with that. There was just too much of a contrast there and it's hard to meld the two. Um, so I, I would say make it a multi, make it um. The mixed-use high-density and it will automatically get upgraded. I mean, nobody's going to keep a trailer lot there when they're sitting on a million-dollar piece of property.
Right. So, you know, the, so I don't need any kind of recommendations at this point. You know, what we'll do is we'll come back with some additional information, but that, that's a good point is that. You know, just keep in mind that there could be some additional development opportunity, you know, that's. Different between the low-density and the mixed-use high-density corridor. When looking at our joint plan, which kind of determines the, the high-level policy. It's, there's not a lot of detail about kind of, you know, Martin Way corridor. Um. There are some specific goals and policies. Number one, achieving a mix of uses along the arterial corridors that are walkable and transit-oriented. Uh, policy F on that, apply different mixes of commercial and high-density residential land uses along the Martin Way corridor. Uh, based upon sensitivity to existing uses, so they may be integrated into the long-term vision, which then gets into some compatibility issues. And then policy G, maintain the health and vitality of existing businesses along the Mar- along Martin Way by accommodating the continued operation of existing auto-dependent uses. That do not meet the intent of the mixed-use high-density corridor. So that's basically maintaining those existing uh, uses there. So. With that, I'm going to stop sharing the screen, turn back over to you for, for any final comments. Again, just as a reminder, I think I got some good direction tonight on some of the concerns. I'm going to reach back out to Thurston County staff, let you know, or let them know where you're coming from and then be able to provide this information back to you at your next meeting. So that you can make a more informed recommendation. But I think either way, there are. There is a significant amount of information that can lead you in both directions that could say, hey, I feel like, you know, for. Purposes of needing more housing and those kinds of things, I, I want to look, look at recommending, you know, a different zoning district or it could be, no, I want to make sure that it's compatible with the surrounding area. I don't want to incentivize somebody for, for creating a violation and then coming back and trying to rezone it as a result. Um, you know, I've got questions about whether that's legitimate use there anyways. So I think either way, uh, we're covered. We've got. Well, I think we just need a little bit more information to make a fully informed decision.
Looked at this, county planning hasn't.
Yes.
Where are they landing on it? Do you know?
I, I do not know the answer. So their uh, planning commission will be briefed on this between this meeting and your next one. And so I can. Come back with that information as well as, you know, as where the county planning commission stands on it too.
So are, are we voting on?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, next time.
Next time.
Yep.
I was premature.
So we went through a whole lot for, but personally, I don't think we're in the business of punishing. Because that's, that's the code enforcement. I think we have to look at what is best for Lacey in the future. That is our job. Okay, this game's me. I had something that's gone.
We kept interrupting.
No, it's, it, it's fine. It's been such an engaging conversation.
Happens more and more as you get older.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Just to Eli's comment, because I, I appreciate that. We do need to look to the city um, to do what's appropriate for the land. But I also think. If we were to allow um, a go from low-density to the uh. Whatever, then we would have definitely had some codes on trees and other kinds of things that are now have become moot points because they're gone. And so, you know, I, I think that remains a relevant issue um, in that.
And I'll find the status for that and have that information.
So I, I did remember. Is there any other kind of zoning districts that you might recommend, might fit some of the things that we talked about?
So really for this, it's between the two. So you have mixed-use high-density corridor that, that follows the Martin Way corridor and then below you've got low-density residential.
So there's nothing else.
There's nothing else. If you did something else, chances are it would be like a spot zone, like this would be it right there and that typically is not a legal. Would not meet any kind of legal requirements as far as the.
I, I just wasn't sure if there was a middle ground.
Well, because you mentioned office, wouldn't that be off the table?
No, office would be allowed in the mixed-use high-density corridor. So if it was zoned for kind of more commercial or higher-density residential use, that would be a, an option. That they could be developed into a, like a little office park or something.
So that would be like a apartment condo uh, with shops below.
Could be that.
Should be nice on Martin.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hans, you're going to talk to us about comprehensive plan engagement and outreach.
Yeah. I'll start by sharing my screen. Two slides for you guys today. There we go. Uh, yeah, so as part of, or I should say, a pretty significant component of the comprehensive plan is community engagement and outreach. Uh, and it being summertime is actually when a lot of our community events are taking place where a lot of. Uh, folks are coming to specific locations all at once. So it's a great opportunity for us to use those events as kind of easy conversation starters and. Easy engagement where people have to work in additional activities into their day-to-day um, schedules in order to meet with us or provide comment. Um, so, the, we actually just held our first kickoff event or kind of community engagement kind of pop-up event. At uh, the barbecue festival um, two weekends ago now. Uh, and really that was at that point just a kind of educational, this is a process that we're going through. This is generally speaking what a comprehensive plan is. Um, moving forward, we're going to be reaching out more often for feedback from the community on specific elements. But right now. We're really just in that awareness uh, and kind of educational conversation phase of things. Um, so we had our consultants pull together a couple posters. Uh, these are actually graphics here of kind of what we had at the booth. Um, the, the four-piece there is really a timeline of comprehensive planning process and what a comprehensive plan is. Uh, then we had two different kind of activity posters, one which led to a survey, which is really just again, a high-level discussion of what a comprehensive plan is. And then opportunity to leave uh, individuals' contact information. So as we move forward in this process. Uh, they can actually identify the areas of the comprehensive plan that they're interested in. And then we can actually do specific outreach to them. When we're working on those sections of the plan. By nature, these are very large plans and a lot of times people are specifically interested in one topic. Uh, and not all of it. So this is actually a great way for us to still get that engagement and that feedback uh, from the people about the subjects they're interested in. Instead of kind of losing them in kind of the entirety of the plan a lot of times, which happens. So, moving to that actual event, um. Yeah, we actually connected and heard from sixty-eight different uh, individuals. I did bring a little bit of show and tell. Uh, so we have, uh, this is one of the posters that we had going on and it was blank at the beginning of that event. And apologies to anybody that's online, you won't be able to see that, but there is a graphic of it there uh, next to Lindsay. Uh, and we asked two different questions, uh, one of which was what do you like about Lacey? And then the follow-up question is what is your vision or, yeah, what is your vision for Lacey's future? Uh, a lot of the comments that we heard that about Lacey specifically as far as what folks like today, uh, had to do with things like parks, trails. Uh, biking and actually free transit, um, which is something since COVID that has kind of taken over. Uh, that was actually referenced a couple times. Uh, also, just a general sense of community and neighborhoods and family-oriented was, were other common themes that we heard throughout. And then uh, events and restaurants. I mean, we were physically at an event, so people kind of said events a couple times. I don't know how much that was swayed by that. But that was another one that showed up. Uh, and then actually moving into the second question here as far as uh, what is your vision for Lacey's future? Uh, we heard things uh, kind of related to multimodal access. So we heard a lot of things about sidewalks. Uh, crosswalks, bike lanes, that kind of thing. So uh. Moving away from vehicle-oriented kind of transportation was a common theme that we heard. Now, we also heard about uh, cool and or splash uh, pad or spray park, which was another thing that uh, folks were pretty interested in having in Lacey. That's not currently uh, an available activity. Uh, affordable housing was another one that came up. Uh, and then healthcare, hospitals and kind of mental health uh, conversations was another theme uh, within that. Given these are really high-level discussions at this point, uh, so we didn't get in, into kind of the details very much, but as, as common themes, those are pretty consistent with. When we do outreach, just generally speaking, a lot of the topics that we hear about. So those are some of the greatest hits uh, that were also echoed in the conversations that we had. So, um, yeah. And then uh, looking forward, our next event that we're actually going to be attending is Cops Cars and Kids. Uh, that's one that uh, City of Lacey has put on annually for, I don't actually know how many years. Uh, historically, it's been in the parking lot here. Uh, but it's actually this year going to be held at Cabela's uh, this weekend. So it'll be a, a larger venue, a little bit easier parking. Um, and then I think a expanded uh, number of booths and other kind of activities that will be taking place as part of that as well. Uh, but we're planning on being attended, in attendance at that one. So we'll have a lot of the same uh, style of information uh, that we had at the barbecue festival. Also at that one, uh, just really kind of having those early, open-ended conversations with folks and really letting them. Uh, guide conversations, ask questions, share feedback and let it go where it may. Um, yeah, so that one's from eleven to three. Uh, we'll plan to have a booth there. Um, these are just two graphics of the kind of stuff. We're thinking about doing uh, some kind of more kid-oriented activities as well. This one was a little bit more. Writing-heavy and kind of conversations. So trying to figure out ways to make that same kind of uh, discussion a little bit more. Uh, oriented sort of use, a little bit more accessible in that sense. Um, by the way, you're all invited if you'd like to attend. Um, whether that's stopping by to say hello or actually spending some time at the booth and chatting with people as they uh, come through, uh, that's. A standing invite both to this one and then also onto our next page here. Uh, these are some kind of, some events that we've been looking uh, at between now and really the end of the year. Uh, that we're thinking about attending. The ones in yellow that I've highlighted are ones that we're probably going to have some kind of presence at. Uh, so Southown BBQ is the first one in yellow there. Cops Cars and Kids, so those are the first two, one that we've already done, one that we just talked about. But looking forward, um, there's um, um, movies in the park, uh, Hunter Park that we do as part of the Parks Program. Uh, so we're looking at a couple of those. Uh, there's also uh, some depot events, so coupling. Uh, some of the food trucks with some of the night markets with some of the, I think we have a harmonica. Music event that's taking place there. So kind of trying to pick uh, events that are taking place, different areas within the community as well. As another kind of uh, goal that we're paying attention to, that we don't want to just keep going back to the same location, but we really want to get a good spread.
Can you send that to us in the email?
For sure. Yeah, I'll definitely send that. And this is still a rough list, so as we get uh, figure out. Uh, what our staff capabilities are as far as attendance, uh, then we'll definitely be able to give you more of a concrete uh, yeah or no, if we're going to be there. Um.
Are you going to do any of the Tuesday night kits?
Yeah, so I think uh. We have a couple Tuesday night uh, ones that we're looking at. But yeah, as the farther out we get, right now, we're only succeeding about two or three weeks of planning right now. So hopefully we'll get a little bit better at that. And uh, we'll have some more concrete uh, dates for you. Um, and then there's two bigger ones, uh. Later in October, November, one is Children's Day, um, again at Hunter Park and then Winter Fest, uh, which is at the community center in November. Those are all, but are two other ones that are really well-attended, uh, large community draw events that we're going to have a presence at for sure. Um, but yeah, that's, that's kind of the update that I have for you guys right now. There'll be more to come. Um, definitely the Cop Hardens kids will be at and then uh, I'll send out a complete list of this with some harder dates and times. That we're going to be at different events that you guys will all be invited to.
So, you know, if we show up and want to be part of this, are you looking for an hour commitment, two hours? What, what are you looking for?
Uh, we're going to have staff there, uh, at any event that we're going to be at the, and we'll divide staff hours up depending on the length of the event. So like the barbecue festival was an eight-hour event, so we had an AM and a PM group that were there. Uh, the Cops Cars and Kids is really only four hours, so we're just going to be there all the way through. Um, so when it comes to you guys, uh, you're an added bonus, which would be wonderful to have. So, so you know, any amount of time that you can work into your schedules will be appreciated and welcome. Um, so we'll make, we'll be, be as flexible as possible with you.
Okay, awesome. Any more questions for Hans?
Thank you for what you do, Hans. We appreciate you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. But yeah, that's, that's it for me.
Any more, any good in the order? So I do, I'll tell you right now. The orcas and the whales and the northern part of the sound are so active. We, we went out whale watching. Saturday afternoon out of Vanderkorres. Oh my God, it was, even the captain said he had never been on a better trip. And, and it was. We were, the boat was surrounded by whales for two hours, swimming underneath the bow, past the, it was. Yeah, I, I, I think when the onboard biologist says, holy shit. So I, I highly recommend, if you can get out in the next couple of weeks and go look at them, I highly recommend, because they're spectacular. All right, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned. We will see you all either at one of the events between now and the twenty-eighth of August or August twenty-eighth. Thank you.